Good evening. I'd like to call the February 10, 2014 Williamson County Commission Meeting to order. First order of business we have is invocation and pledge. Invocation by Commissioner Ricky Jones, pledge by Cheryl Wilson. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you have given us. We thank you for this opportunity to represent the people of Williamson County, and may we do so with their best interest at heart, and may we debate the items that are on the agenda tonight with that in consideration. We thank you for living in this great state and in this county of ours. At this time, dear Lord, we ask that you be with all of our servicemen over in foreign lands that are protecting our freedoms and be with them and their families, and bring them back safely home. Be with us as we go throughout the rest of this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. If you're present, please push your yes button and confirm.
What after Commissioner Ryan Redd?
Any additions or deletions to those? I see none. If you're in favor as submitted, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And they are approved. Next, we have the introduction and exceptions of highway commission minutes. Each copy was mailed to each county commission. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Mr. Cook, Mr. Hayes the Second. All in favor of those as submitted, signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Citizens communication? Do we? We have no citizens communication. Next, under communications and messages, we have two late file resolutions, Resolution 214-17 and 18, and they are on your agenda under other. And if I hear no objections, we will hear those as they are in your packet. So, no objections, we'll hear those, so we will hear those. Next, we have reports of county offices. First, we'll hear from County Mayor Rogers Anderson. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up. We've got a proclamation first. I got ahead of myself.
Just happy to have it. In your package tonight is a proclamation for, if you'll allow me to read just a little of it, the American Heart Association's "Go Red for Women." The movement has been impacting the health of women for 10 years, and more than 627,000 women's lives have been saved, and 330 fewer women are dying every day. Whereas the heart disease is the number-one killer of women, yet only one in five women believe that heart disease is her greatest health threat. And cardiovascular diseases causes one in the three women's death each year, killing approximately one woman every minute. Estimated 43 women in the United States are affected by cardiovascular diseases. Ninety percent of women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease, and women comprise only 24 percent of participants in all heart-related studies. And since 1984, more women than men have died each year from heart disease, and the gap between men and women's survival continues to widen. Whereas women are more likely to call 911 for themselves when experiencing symptoms of a heart attack than they are if someone else were having a heart attack. This past Friday was a wear-red day here in the county. I might report that here in our complex and throughout other areas of our satellite offices, many people decorated their door to draw attention to this. We appreciate the efforts of all of our employees, and we designated February the 7th, last Friday, as the proclamation for the American Heart Association's "Go Red for Women." Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just go right on into our reports. I'll ask our Budget Director Nina Graham to come up and give you an overview.
This evening in your packets, we have our December 31st monthly budget report. The report that was sent out in your packets, I did not have the school numbers at that time, so I've emailed you all the final report. Our numbers are reflecting where we would think they would be at six months. Also, we have the Cool Springs Conference Center report. This month, the county received $91,933.14. We also have our privileged tax report for the month of December. We had a total of $940,320 collected for the month of December. Those are all of our normal monthly reports. If anybody has any questions.
Anyone have a question for Nina? I see none. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to report. Try to entertain any questions that anyone would like to ask.
Anyone have a question for the mayor? I see none. Thank you. Moving on, Dr. Looney is not here with us tonight, so therefore, we won't have a school report. But I'd like to call on Kathy Montgomery with the Health Department to come up. Also, while she's on the way up, I forgot to mention today is WCTV Director Newt Danley's birthday, so let's wish Newt a happy birthday when you see him. He's back there in the goby hole. So, happy birthday, Newt, and that's personal business.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I'm excited to come to you today and report that the Williamson County Health Council has been busy coordinating and planning our sixth annual Walk Across Williamson that's getting ready to kick off on March the 1st. Now, the mayor just read this proclamation about heart disease and it being the number-one killer among women. Well, it's also the number-one killer among men, and one of the greatest risk factors is obviously physical inactivity. So, the Walk Across Williamson has been a program where we're really trying to encourage both children and adults to be physically active for at least 60 minutes a day. So, we encourage you to go back to your communities because our kickoff is starting on March the 1st. It's on a Saturday. It's going to be from 9:00 to 10:00, and we actually have four different locations that we're going to be hosting the kickoff. There's going to be a kickoff event at Woodland Middle School in Brentwood, Pinkerton Park here in Franklin, Bowie Park in Fairview, and Thompson Station Park in Thompson Station, and trying to draw in the Spring Hill crowd. I can tell you that last year, we had 3,110 schoolchildren and community members that participated, primarily from our schools, though, and they logged over 6,278 minutes of physical activity during the month of March. So, really, really exciting. Another date I'd like for you to add to your calendar, if you would, April the 12th is going to be the celebration event at Pinkerton Park. This is where all the kids are going to come, and they get prizes and things like that for their participation, or at least get an entry form for prizes. So, last year, we had over 450 people participate, so we'd like to invite you or extend that invitation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other county offices to hear from? I think not. Moving on, I did want to take a moment and call attention to your packet. I had a letter in there from Animal Control and Adoption Center, and I want to make sure you have time to look at that. Those are some pretty impressive numbers to me, and just what a great job they're doing there. So, just throw that out there. Next, moving on to elections and appointments. First, we have the Ethics Committee. Vacancy, Commissioner Ernie Williams. Nomination, Commissioner Greg Davis. Commissioner Barnwell and Commissioner Little. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Commissioner Davis? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Next, we have disciplinary review board. Field unexpired term, expiring five of 2014. Pete Flogger, who's deceased. Nomination, Hugh Tharp. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Langston the Second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Hugh Tharp? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? And he is confirmed. Next, we have the consent agenda. Only thing on the consent agenda is the notaries, so that's on there. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Mr. Botman, Mr. Wilson the Second. All in favor of the consent agenda? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Resolution passes. Moving on to appropriations. Resolution Number 214-1, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners' approval of $1,520,000 for the purchase of buses for the 2014-2015 school year from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Mr. Hancock the Second. School Board, 10 yes, 0 no. Education Committee?
Six fours, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the annual resolution we passed to cover the next school year's buses. We have to order them very early in the day in order to have them in time for school. It encompasses six replacement buses and nine growth buses. There is state legislation going on right now that may extend the life of some of our buses, but we won't know that before. We won't have it approved law by the time we have to order these things. Dr. Looney said at the Education Committee meeting that if we should be able to keep more of these buses, not have to need as many, we should be able to cancel our order for those ones we don't need because there's always a queue for buses.
Sorry. Sorry.
You want me to repeat that?
I'll have to put the Beatles on.
Glad I turned my phone off.
Sorry. Oh, goodness, I'm not going to do this.
Push the button.
There you go. There you go. Sorry. Turn off your phone. You didn't turn off your phone.
All right. Everybody else, turn off your iPad and your phone.
With that, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions on the school buses?
Just to clarify where you were going with the end of those remarks from the Education Committee, if the law is passed and he can basically get the money back, and it will go back into the general fund, or we would just not be obligated?
No, it's full fund balance.
Okay. We wouldn't be obligated?
It'd just be money we wouldn't be spending out of fund balance.
Legislators say they'll be through in April, so.
But again, the law has to pass, and the government has to sign it.
Right.
Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Dwight Jones?
I would be, I mean, we put our kids on these buses, day in and day out, and I would be willing to say nobody in this room drives a car that's between 15 and 20 years old. And if you are, I'm shocked. I mean, I know what the legislation says. The fact, the point I'm trying to make here is, you know, instead of people at the state getting fat in their wallets off these independent contractors and everything else, we need to take care of what's at home. I mean, we put our kids on this bus, day in and day out. To replace a motor is ridiculous. At 20 years old, a bus, the front ends are going to fall off of them. So, you know, we need to think about it at home just as much as worrying about if we're getting our money back if they pass this law.
This is not a carte blanche extension of the buses. There's a massive inspection process that they have to follow through at least twice a year, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Right, Leslie?
No.
Okay. And I think Dr. Looney said there was going to be at least two inspections per year on any of these buses that are extended.
I understand all that. My point is, is what it takes to replace a bus, whether it's a motor, front end, or whatever, we need to be being mindful of what goes on these buses. It's not hauling, you know, prisoners. We're hauling kids. We're hauling our future. We need to take care of our home, too.
And I don't think the school system would haul kids unsafely.
I think it's wasting money is what I'm.
All right. Let's bring it back this way. Any other discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 214-1, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-2, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Archives budget by $4,680. Revenue is to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson the Second. Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is grant funds that will be used to purchase supplies and equipment and for the preservation of the county records.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 214-2, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-3, resolution amending the 2013-2014 Highway Department budget and appropriate up to $30,000 for replenishment of road salt. Revenue is to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Hayes the Second. Highway Commission, assume five fours, 0 against. Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is to replenish the supply and keep a full supply on hand of our salt that we clear the road, of their salt that they're cleared the roads with.
All right. Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 214-3, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-4, resolution amending the 2013-2014 Highway Department budget and appropriating up to $125,000 for additional engineering costs. Revenue is to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little the Second. Highway Commission, four fours, 0 against. And Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is for the additional engineering expenses to work with the road and try to develop a road, pave a road that's context-sensitive. We have a lot of roads in this county that have historical significance, and this is probably something we're going to see a little more of as time goes on. Recommend you approve.
Question, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I have been there quite a bit at the highway meetings. There's been a lot of attention given to this particular road, and I understand it has significant preservation efforts that have gone into that. It's taken a long time for this road to get approved, and I know, I think, more than any other road that we've had, probably since I've been serving, have we spent as much money on. And I wish we had ways to, you know, be, have a source of funding for that type thing so that we don't have to spend so much time and effort on that particular road. I know it's taken a lot of effort for the west side to get this approved, and Mayor Brockman and her team have worked very hard on this. But there are other roads, and maybe that in the future might be something that we can work on, other efforts toward the east side and other areas for preservation of roads. But I understand from Mr. Hood that we're going to be having, you know, a beautiful road from that effort. But that, I just wanted to mention, it's taken quite a bit of revenue to get that done.
Mr. Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought I would address the issue. It was interesting, there was a presentation made to the community out along Olnatchis Trace Road by Chad Collier, who's been the engineer on this project, and it really is a game-changer, sort of a watershed moment, if you will. Hawkins Partners, they are landscape architects. They've been involved in the project. But I would like to say that Chad said the plans that are going to give this road the sensitive job that it needs is actually going to be cost less money. So, when they redo that road, which include landscaping and special bridge abutments, and so they, it's all about the scenic and historic value of that road, the project is actually going to cost less. So, I think that's important to note.
Any other discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 214-4, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change?
Just a second. Mine didn't take.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-5, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Library budget by $1,250. Revenue is to come from grant funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Smith the Second. Library Board?
Seven fours, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Library Foundation received a grant from the Tennessee State Library Association in Archives for data processing in the amount of $1,250, and this is just our ability to utilize it now.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 214-5, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-6, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Library budget by Revenue is to come from miscellaneous donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston the Second. Library Board?
Seven fours, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is just donations from individuals and organizations that allows us, and this allows us to process them and start to use them for the benefit of the library.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 214-6, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-8, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Juvenile Services budget by $20,000. Revenue is to come from participant fees. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Langston the Second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven in favor, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The expenses for drug screens and other expenses that we have in the juvenile areas above projection, and this is moving fees that we get for administering those drug fees into the budget so that we can spend the money.
Okay. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 214-8, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
Resolution 214-9, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-2014 Williamson County Sheriff's Office budget by $285. Revenue is to come from donations. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the Second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven in favor, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Four fours, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a $285 donation to be used for the air program.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 214-9, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 214-10, resolution accepting a donation of $10,000 from Julia Robison, conditioned on the funds being used to purchase equipment for the Williamson County Sheriff's Department SWAT team. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones the Second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven fours, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was four fours, 0 against as amended, and I'd like to offer the amendment, which was in our packet. It adds the designations for the $10,000 revenue and $10,000 expenditures.
Second.
All right. So, that was a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second, Ford. Okay. Also, let me call to your attention, on your agenda, there was a typo there, so it mentions $100,000 there, but the resolution's correct. It's $10,000. So, okay. Any questions on the amendment? I see none. Is it loaded, Linda? Okay. So, we're voting on the amendment to add the revenue and the expenses line items to the resolution. So, if you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-three, yes, 0 no.
The amendment passes. Now, back to the main resolution as amended. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just give a quick explanation?
Sure.
We got the amendment on the floor and didn't get the explanation. This is a $10,000 donation from a Ms. Robison to be used for our SWAT department, and we would like to thank Ms. Robison especially.
and we would like to thank Ms. Robison especially. This is, this makes up close to a hundred thousand dollars that she has donated to the Sheriff's Department, and just want to make sure that she gets the appreciation for that.
Wow, very good, thank you. Any discussion? I see none, you're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, ten, push your yes button and confirm. As amended, yes. Opposed? If you want to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
All right, Resolution two, fourteen, ten, as amended, passes. Resolution two, fourteen, thirteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand thirteen, fourteen animal control budget by five thousand dollars. Revenue is to come from Williamson Animal Services Incorporated for the purchase of supplies to construct an equine housing area at the Williamson County landfill. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes the second. Public Health Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at this time, we don't have any adequate, any facilities at all to care for large animals, horses in particular, and this area will be constructed for that purpose. And the people from Animal Services told me that they occasionally got one. It's not something that happens a lot, but we, they need a place for one when it does happen. Appreciate your support.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, we do need to express our appreciation to the caring citizens and veterinarians who have allowed us to keep animals when we've had an emergency like that. I'm sure you remember the time that there was a wreck on interstate with large animals and cattle. We've had a lot of people who've come forth and helped us, and this should, well, you can see on your report that we have the farm, there are several large animals that we have now around, and this will help us at the landfill have a place that they can be cared for until what time they're ready to be adopted or returned to their owner or taken care
Commissioner Smith?
I was just going to ask for a little follow-up, Mr. Chairman, on the extent of the construction project. It's a shelter and those sorts of things.
May I respond? Yes, sir. We, as a task force uncovered several years ago, we had a veterinarian, Danny Haber, and Larry Darnell from the Ag Center who was there, and they identified some things that were needed. Laura and the landfill and Nancy Zion have been working together with people there. That will be a shelter, there will be fencing, there will be a feeding area, a paddock area, and everything they would need to be safe and comfortable. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you. I know this is an unusual situation, and you don't have many occurrences of having a large animal, horse or donkey taken in. What is the normal disposition of when this does happen? Because I guess I'm just a little concerned about, you know, animals that might come in that have not been taken care of and what might happen.
May I respond? When those things do happen, and Laura is here to further characterize or tell, but when they have them, they have, of course, the veterinarian services. We have our own excellent veterinarian, but there are other large animal veterinarians who are very anxious to come and assist us at all times. They're taken care of and evaluated as to what their needs are, and they are tried to identify, believe it or not, we've had people who have moved off and left their horses, and we've had to go through some judgments from time to time where they were, had to try to locate the owners. Some few have been returned to the owners over the years. Sometimes the court has to act and deem them to be our wards. At that time, we can place them for adoption. Once upon a time, when there were some abuse cases, we did do a bidding process several years back, but we try to make sure that the welfare of the animal is taken care of.
Any other discussion? Oh, Commissioner Bane?
Yes, Commissioner Brockman, I happen to know the answer to your question. In two thousand ten, when we had the flood, the Ag Expo Center was very involved with other farmers, and there was over two hundred and forty horses that came through the Ag Expo Center during that flood. And what they were doing is coordinating with other equestrian farms, and there was a lot of cooperation, and the animals did get cared for. But it's a wonderful project and glad to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bane, any other discussion? I see none, you're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, thirteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two, fourteen, fourteen, resolution amending the two thousand thirteen, fourteen Williamson County Health Department budget by sixty-one thousand seven hundred one dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds and authorizing the county mayor to execute the necessary grant documents. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Wilson the second. Public Health Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this was some funds that was not anticipated when they were preparing the budget, and it's grant funds, and we pass this and give the mayor authorization to sign whatever documents need to be signed in order to get this grant. And the expenditures will be used for existing contracts.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, fourteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two, fourteen, fifteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand thirteen, fourteen animal control budget by twelve thousand dollars. Revenue is to come from unappropriated county general fund balance. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes the second. Public Health Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, this is twelve thousand dollars that was not appropriated, that we're trying to appropriate at this time, and money's coming from unincorporated county general, unappropriated county general fund balance, and the expenditures will be for drugs and medical supplies.
I might just say that the fifty-nine thousand is money that was given as donations, it's gone into the general fund, and as it's needed, it's appropriated back out, so we're not, we're not appropriating new money. This was money that was donated, and we're using, requesting to use twelve thousand dollars for the medical supplies. As you see on the report, our euthanasia rate is decreased substantially, our adoption rate is increasing. Part of that is due, and hopefully our intake will keep on reducing. Part of that due to the fact of spaying and neutering so many animals, and we want to keep, keep doing that.
Very good, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, fifteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two, fourteen, sixteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand thirteen, fourteen Parks and Recreation budget by ninety-two thousand six hundred ninety dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Four, 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 zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Cook?
These are donations from various youth organizations and local businesses to be used for operational expenses or special events for our Parks and Rec Department.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, sixteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two, fourteen, seven, resolution declaring weapons and related equipment surplus to be disposed of through the acceptance of bids. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cook the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
These are our old weapons and ammunition from the Sheriff's Department that they can't use anymore, are going to put them up for bid, and the bidders have to be Class Three law enforcement weapons dealers.
All right, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, seven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two, fourteen, eleven, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute an equipment lease agreement with Biometric Therapeutics Incorporated. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell the second. Property Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
There's a attached equipment list on here. It's basically self-explanatory. It's a grant that we're just redoing a lease.
All right, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, eleven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two, fourteen, twelve, resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, fire protection and recreation. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Property Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Highway Commission, four, four, zero against. Education Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Parks and Rec Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, we do this every year. It's part of our privilege tax authorization, or the state statute requires that we maintain a roadmap of capital projects that we update it every year, and it's a five-year plan. It is by no means an intent to fund, it's just a roadmap to give us guidance for our future projects.
All right. Commissioner Danner?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Leslie, if you could, in the absence of Dr. Looney. One is the new Nolansville area high school and middle school costs. I'm just confused, I've heard so many numbers now that the two schools together, we'll just call it the northeast campus, originally I heard the cost was seventy-five million, then I've heard seventy million, and then, but the costs on here, those two line items are sixty-four million.
That's because you've already funded it, funded about ten million dollars of it already.
For the, that was for land and design?
Land, design and site prep.
And site prep, okay. And then also, I didn't see, did you send us the enrollment numbers?
I thought I did.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it in the packet, okay. Was it in the electronic packet?
I sent you all, I sent the-
They sent two emails, sent two of them, one was with the fund balance number and one was with the-
Student numbers.
Okay, I didn't see it, I apologize.
We're right at, right, right below thirty-four thousand at the fifth month.
And the enrollment numbers have, the enrollment for every school?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, twelve, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late File Resolution two, fourteen, seventeen, resolution to establish written procedures governing purchases made by Williamson County at public advertised auctions. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Purchasing and Insurance Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, at the present time, when we go out to purchase anything, we have to advertise for competitive bidding, and under the new Tennessee code annotated, we are, gives us an opportunity to purchase secondhand and new equipment and other materials without going through a publicly advertised auction, and this is, this resolution requires that we put a written procedure in place to allow for those public auctions.
I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution two, fourteen, seventeen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late File Resolution two, fourteen, eighteen, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute the applications required in supporting fiscal year two thousand fourteen THDA home grant application in the amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the motion. Commissioner Little the second. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
The state of Tennessee's home program makes this program available for county residents who are, who have substandard housing in need of repair, and these are county residents, and they have to occupy the home. This is a great program that possibly we can help some people who cannot help themselves.
Very good, any discussion? I see none, ready to vote? If you're in favor of Late File Resolution two, fourteen, eighteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
This concludes our agenda. Does anyone else have anything else? I'd like to take this time to thank Sheriff Deputy Hooper and Sheriff Deputy Burks for being here, thank you all, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.